One, two, our third of our town hall meetings. These meetings are being recorded and will air on our YouTube channel following the conclusion of the event. And so I'd like to thank first of all, the staff in the office of Strategic Planning and Communications, as well as the video production team here from the Forest Center for making that possible. This evening is another opportunity for us to hear from our community and to share what is happening across the school system. We have some special guests who are part of this evening's event. First of all, Dr. Smith, Superintendent, who will be sharing words. And then we have our panel, which includes Ms. Jennifer Cord, our Maryland Teacher of the Year nominee from White Marsh Elementary, and Ms. Tracy Harding, our Washington Post Teacher of the Year from Lannertown High School, and Ms. Jill Morris, who is President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. And so they will be joining and sharing their thoughts as we go through the evening. And then also, we encourage you to ask questions of the panel and from our staff as well. And so, without further ado, I would introduce Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. No, no, please applause. Oh my gosh, thank you, Dr. Morris. Very nice. Really, today is, this evening is a recap of our presentation earlier today for the State of the Schools, and State of Schools sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. It was a fundraising event, it was a paid-for dinner, and we certainly wanted to give everybody an opportunity to hear the same information and ask any questions that might come up, and hear from some subject matter experts about what's going on within the school system, what is, what are some of the challenges that we face, what are some of the really wonderful things that they're doing every single day. So, we start as we always have, we start at the beginning of the year, we finish every year, and throughout the year, we go back to the mission. It has existed for over a decade. It's 22 words. It's exceptionally important because it does indeed govern and guide our work in St. Mary's County Public Schools. We are focusing specifically on the second portion of that 22-word mission statement, "Accept No Excuses, Educating All With Rigor, Relevance, Respect, and Positive Relationships." Our, quite, we started our town hall meetings earlier this year with a discussion of the Equity Task Force, the work that we were doing, the policy recommendation that would be coming before the Board, and then ultimately, the attendant regulations that will kind of define how we go about that work. And it really stems from that second sentence, that "We won't accept excuses." There are a thousand reasons why something doesn't work, or why something is the way we find it. We can't accept that. We have to work to combat that and to change that, and ultimately, educate everybody with the three big Rs: rigor, relevance, respect, and positive relationships. Last year, when we did the State of the Schools, and every single year, we talk about the fact that the school system, of all entities that you'll interact with in St. Mary's County, the school system is probably one of the most accountable and one of the most transparent. We have to do our work in front of the public. The Board cannot meet and deliberate without there being a public notice. We, every single year, have to write an academic plan, the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. Every single year, we have to write an Educational Facilities Master Plan that talks about how we're going to go about taking care of all the things that we have. And then every single year, we have to update a capital improvement plan that lays the course for the way we will be maintaining our buildings and building for our future for the next five to 10 years. All of that is accessible on our school system webpage. And in fact, the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan, if you go and click on it this week, it'll be last year's master plan. If you go and click on it next week, it will be the updated 2020 Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. That is how we are transparent in our work. You can see what we're doing, you can have input to what we're doing. How we are accountable is we are audited every single year. We have an external audit that comes in and takes a look at all of our work. We were, I don't have my cheat sheet in front of us, but I do have Ms. Tammy McCourt there. So, I know that there are four things that we look for in every single audit. There was no instances of fraud, which is a very important thing not to have any instances of. There were no major, there were...
No findings?
No findings. There were no findings, and of course, there would be findings of fraud as well, but there were no findings. There were...
No material weaknesses?
No material weaknesses in our internal control. So, we were controlling everything quite well. And?
Unmodified opinion.
It was an unmodified opinion. Those are the four things that you asked for, and those are the four things that you want. Also, aside from the annual audit, every single month, if you were to attend one of our Board of Ed meetings, we do a full overview of where we stand, revenues to expenses, and if there were any transfers of funds within the categories. That is made public and available for purview and available for discussion. So, we're very accountable, we're very transparent. If you want to know what's going on in the school system, it is there and available. This evening, in this evening's presentation, and really, the conversation this year, if last year was that education is not an expense, it's an investment, this year, I think we should really focus on what is the return we are seeing from our investment. We're going to talk a little bit further, I'm going to give you some background information. We're going to talk a little bit about how much money the operation of the school system costs, how much money the state and the federal and the local governments contribute to run our, to have our school system run smoothly. So, what is our return on investment? To discuss that, you have a, in front of you, you have our annual report. If you didn't, if you weren't able to get a copy of our annual report, it's also linked on our homepage. It's laid out very similar to our annual report last year, and it is organized around the five tenants of Whole Child. When you talk about educating a child, you can't talk about one part, you have to talk about all of the parts together, how they work all together. And that's one of the challenges with the Kerwin Commission, is we're breaking down funding into these small little streams, and we're talking individually about things, and really, it's presenting a whole package of what it costs to educate a child. So, safe, supported, engaged, challenged, and healthy, those are the five tenants of the Whole Child. When we talk about safety, what have we invested in, in safety over the last year and several years before that? We have certainly done building safety initiatives, a hardening of the buildings themselves. We have installed in all of our high schools, and, well, we will have installed in all of our high schools by the time we get to winter break, access control. That means that every single external ground-level door has an enunciation device that goes back to a panel where a security person will know instantly if a door has been opened, or more importantly, if a door has been left open. Right beyond those doors, we have security cameras, so as soon as we notice a door is open, we can take a look to see what's going on with that hall, what's going on in that portion of the room. And you can, you can see the way that looks, that's Great Mills High School, as far as the, I think that's Great Mills, maybe that's Chopticon. Is it Great Mills? Great Mills High School. Each one of them has a similar layout. We have been able to add more security cameras. We now have 750 high-definition, i.e. the internet, over-internet, internet protocol, oh, I, whatever. They're not, they're not analog, they're actual digital, they go, they go up to the cloud, and you can access them remotely from anywhere in St. Mary's County Public Schools and throughout the, throughout the system. We have been able to add additional safety and security personnel, specifically in partnering with the schools, with the schools and the Sheriff's Department, we have been able to the, the Sheriff's Office has additional funding for another two SROs. That means that we have school resource officers at all of our secondary school, all three of our high schools, and all four of our middle schools. Why that's important is because they're not, they're no longer dividing their time between sites. They get to be at one school and really make a deep connection with the students and staff at that, at that building. And then for elementary schools, we've been able to secure through grant funding, overtime pay, so that officers across the county can identify a school that they particularly would like to be affiliated with, they adopt that school, and they interact with the school and the school staff, and they're one of the first people that they reach out if they have a question or a concern. The Overwatch Program also pays for, when police officers and sheriff's deputies are off-duty, they can go and spend a little time at an elementary school, walk the perimeter, talk to people, and there's an opportunity for them to receive overtime pay to do that. The second part of school safety is, is the behavioral supports. What we do with our people, how we plan for what might, what might happen. So, crisis prevention and intervention training, CPI training. We spend a great deal of time and energy in ramping all of that up, getting as many people as possible through that, so that we have at every single one of our schools a threat assessment team that is steeped in this information, knows exactly what to do, so that when we receive a threat, or we have information that comes to us through a tip line, or through a student, or through a parent, or through a community member, we have a protocol and a practice for everybody to get together to talk about what that threat really constitutes, and at what level should it be addressed, all the way up to in the involvement of local law enforcement. Investments and engagement, that whole making connections, how important it is that we, that, that in doing our work, we have to have the students in particular, in particular, really bought into the programs that we have. So, student voice is incredibly important in that. All of our middle schools have a principal's advisory council where they're given direct input into the principals. All of our high schools have representatives and a principal's advisory council that also then come to the superintendent's leadership advisory council, where they meet quarterly with me. There's a steering committee that meets monthly with me, and it's all driven by students. We talk about what's going on in their lives, we talk about what are their concerns, we talk about what we need to do to support them, and we have a meeting, our next meeting's coming up in December, and we're looking forward to that. Highly trained staff, and that means all staff. That's not just, that's not just educators, but also educators, administrators, par educators. Everybody is involved with and understands how important it is to really support students and be involved in the lives of students, and they come to it with a passion and a dedication. It's not something that they're compelled to do, it's something that they deeply believe in and want to spend their time understanding how best to interact with kids. Rigorous instruction, we'll talk a little bit about data points later on, but we are delivering a very rigorous program and pathway in preparing kids for, at the high school level, in particular, college-level work, advanced placement work, technical skill attainment work, such as what you'd have here at the Forest Center. Universal design for learning, we recognize that the, exactly what I'm doing for you here tonight, where I'm standing before you and speaking, and perhaps have a PowerPoint deck that has multiple slides, that's one of the least effective ways to have people actually interact with, engage, and understand what you're talking about. And our teachers know that. Universal design for learning says that there are multimodal ways in which you learn, the more authentic, hands-on, creative way that we can address that, the better off we're all going to be. Specialized pathways, we're here at the Forest Center, there are 24 specialized pathway programs here. At every single one of the high school, there are multiple pathways, and then we have signature pathways at each one of our high schools. And then the last is that, you know, in engagement, we have structured academic interventions. We realize that all kids aren't going to learn at the same pace. And so, what we have to do is we have to build into all of those pathways and all that UDL, an opportunity to have a structured intervention plan that's very methodical, purposeful, and clearly articulated. And that really then leads to support. We invest in support. We have a multi-tiered system of support that not only supports kids academically, but also behaviorally. We have research-based academic and behavioral interventions that we use, and moreover, we've been investing in the last year, making sure that we're gathering data on the other side. Just because you have a great intervention, or you have a program, or you've been sold something, you have to know how it is actually interacting with and supporting our kids. So, response to intervention says, we're going to gather that data so that we can review what we're doing and see whether it is actually creating the impact that we want to have. And the last is social emotional learning, and we've been talking so much about this over the last five or six years, it's so incredibly important. We recognize that, that a lot of our kids come to school, and perhaps they haven't had the structure and support outside of the school that kids traditionally had, and so it is our job to help them manage themselves, manage their behavior, manage their pacing and structure of their day. And so, we start with our littlest kids in pre-K with Frog Street, which has puppets and interactions, and it's a lot of fun, and they sing to people, and they, it's really, it's really quite warm and wonderful. Conscious discipline talks really about why kids do what they do, what the role of the adult is, and even though something is happening right in front of you, it's not happening to you, so as the adult, you have to, you have to really understand what that, what that looks like. We have been investing a great deal in training for all of our elementary, for our pre-K with Frog Street, conscious discipline with K grades one, grades two, and three, four, and five, as needed. Some of our, some of our buildings have actually done, the entire, the entire staff has gone through conscious discipline training. Moreover, we're actually using conscious discipline training for our community partners and parents, because it's very important, because the things that are effective in a classroom are extremely effective in the home, and the way in which we can extend what happens in the school with what's happening in the home, we are so much the better for it. All of our elementary schools are implementing some version of responsive classroom with Monday, with morning meetings where we gather, where we socially interact with one another, where the kids really do learn about one another and themselves, and they interact every single day. Restorative justice, we have partnered with the Education Association of St. Mary's County to provide training for that. That drives a lot of our work in middle schools and high schools. Positive behavioral interventions and supports, we're closing in on two decades' worth of being PBIS schools, and then capturing kids' hearts, and that's really targeted at our eighth grade and going into ninth grade transition kids. Investment in challenge, you have to challenge kids. You have to, you have to, you have to be challenged. If you really want to be successful, you have to challenge yourself every single day. And that might look different for every single student, but for every single student, we have a way in which we can challenge them. Dual enrollment, where they are, they can take a college course, they can take a college course at CSM, they can take a college course in our school with our teachers teaching it, they can take a course with our teachers and with their performance being at a particular level, it's an articulated credit. We have AP courses. We now have 28 offered AP courses, including AP Seminar, an AP Capstone, we have academy programs, obviously GIS, and you'll hear from Ms. Tracy Harding about that, and CTE Pathways. Here at the Tech Center, we're being videotaped today by the Audio and Visual Production Team, and they're going to do an incredible job, and they're going to make us look really, really good. Going to figure out some way to stretch this so I look taller and thinner and younger. And there's just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different ways that kids can get through school. Our kids, 45% said that they're going to attend a two-year college, and that number is growing, because more and more kids recognize the incredible value of community college and how that can get you a really great start, a really affordable start. 35%, say they're going to go to four years. About 4% are going to attend a trade or technical school, 6% are going to enter the military as a professional career, and 10% say they're going to go straight right into the workforce. Here at the Forest Center, the CTE programs, we also have internships and apprenticeship opportunities. We're trying to get more paid apprenticeship opportunities. Every single one of the programs here ends with an industry certification and credentials, something that augments our resume, something that helps them step right into, if they wanted to, the world of work and earn the top dollar that they can. And all the college, all the programs here have some form of articulated credit with colleges and trade schools. 24 courses of the 25, 25 courses of the 24 programs have an articulated credit, at least one articulated credit. The last is, we invest in the health of our kids. Kids have to be well, they have to, they have to, they have to feel good, they have to feel healthy, and we invest in that. We do have wellness programs operating in every single one of our building. Wellness programs not only for kids, but also for our staff. Franklin Covey says, you know, you got to sharpen the saw, you got to take care of yourself, and that's the way you can be the best you. We do a great deal of nutrition education. We do not only nutrition education with some of our older kids, but with our younger kids, we do farm-to-table and farm-to-school. It's incredible. We serve over a million meals to students, and they meet all the ADA requirements that they, that they need. And you can see them there, and they're all so happy. Facilities, we do invest in our facilities, we do invest in our athletic facilities and components in all of our, all of our schools, from resurfacing a gym floor to making sure that all the playground equipment is replaced in a, in a fashion. I think we just got to the end of the entire replacement and refurbishment cycle, and when you get to the end of a cycle, after going to 28 schools or 18 elementary schools, it starts right all over again. And the last really goes back to the beginning, mental health support. Kids, kids have to feel safe and healthy and challenged and engaged, and so we need to make sure that we're investing in that mental health component. We are so pleased that we have social workers, eight additional social workers through a, through a cooperative grant that we, that with the Department of Health, we were able to secure for the next three years, well, this year, and then we have to apply for it for the remaining three, but, but at least for the next three years. So, every single one of our secondary schools will have access to a school psychologist, depending upon the need, it will depend upon how much time they're going to be there, dedicated pupil personnel worker, school counselors, and then also rounding it out a social worker. So, there's a lot of resources that are available to kids who might need that extra support, because that's an exceptionally important component, and they're not going to find it anywhere else in the community. If it's not, if it's not provided at school, some of these kids would never be able to get that kind of support, and so we make sure that we have that. We talked a little bit at the very beginning about our Education Facilities Master Plan, the new plan, it's a new format. They told us to focus on just three things. You can't fix everything all the time, every year, so really focus on three things. So, we focused on three things that, that we believe give us the greatest benefit to our kids, and that's early literacy. If you go and take a look at it, we'll talk about universal screening for all of our kids, training for all of our teachers to use DIBELS, training to make sure that when we get back the data, that it's actionable. Talk a lot about transition grades. So, if early literacy from being at home to coming to school, that's the first transition. The second transition is going from fifth grade to sixth grade, which is a big change. We have some people who are in schools with 240 students in elementary school, and they know every single child in there, and then they roll up into a middle school with a thousand. And so, that's a great, that's a great deal of change. And then we have, when we move from eighth grade to high school, that's another challenge. You go from a thousand to 1,800 kids perhaps in a school, and in high school, everything counts. Everything counts, and everything's recorded, and everything goes on your transcript. And specifically then, we have to make sure that we're really investing in ninth grade success programs, so that we catch kids before they fail. The whole idea is you have to catch kids before they fail, you have to see the early indicators, and you have to intervene in a meaningful way to help scaffold support so that they are successful. So, our comprehensive strategic plan is going to be these three components, and if you're interested, oh my gosh, please download it. So, all of this takes money. So, I have a video here. We have, we've got, we've got three incredibly gifted kids that have been making videos from the beginning of the year, and they'll continue to the end of the year, to help us, help us work our way through the school year, to help us understand why it's important to go to school every single day, to help us understand how we prepare for one lunch, to help us understand how we, how we will be preparing for the SAT. They're geared more towards the high school students. So, we went to the, to the three of them and said, "Can you make a video about budget? Can you, from a, from a student's perspective, can you make a video that kind of explains how complex it is to actually create a school system budget?" And then Ms. Tammy McCourt sat down with them for quite a while, and kind of walked through all the component pieces of the budget, and then they, they wrote this. They put it all together, they wrote it, they kept on coming back for a little bit of tweaking, but this is, this is a product of our kids talking about how important and how a budget is created in St. Mary's County Public Schools. So, if you'll indulge me, let's play it.
Hey!
Hey! How are y'all doing?
I'm good, how are you? Just headed for lunch.
Cool. It's a lot of homework.
I know, we have a big history project due tomorrow, and I have to use my textbooks for it.
I wonder how the school system pays for textbooks and lunch and other stuff in the school?
They have to budget everything.
How do they do that?
Good question, but let's go somewhere I can put my books down, please.
The school receives funding from multiple sources, the state, county, and federal government, and grants, all contribute to give money to the operation of our schools.
So, that's what pays for things like textbooks, paperwork, printers, and bus transportation?
Yes. Imagine if your parents gave you an allowance, let's say $30 a week. You can't just spend all of that money, you have responsibilities and things you need to pay for. You can't just spend it on shoes and games. If you drive, you got to spend it on gas. If you travel, you have to spend that money on food. In order to do those things, you have to set a budget, and set priorities on how much money you need to spend in each activity. The school system does the same thing. They receive all of those funds from multiple sources, and they have a budget based off of the school system's needs.
I would just ask my parents for an allowance, so I could afford anything I want.
That's not how it works. Funding is based on the number of students in the entire system. If there are 18,000 students in the school system, the system would receive a certain amount of money per student. There's a policy in place called maintenance of effort, which is when the funding has to be at the same level per student as last year. This is in place so educational programs can continue to operate at the same level. The challenge is when the needs change or different requirements are added, and you try to make do with the same amount. Let's use Josh's backpack as an example. What do you have in there?
Let's see. So, I have my folders, I have my textbooks, another textbook, and then I have my pens and pencils.
So, imagine the textbooks are the funding sources of the school system. The folders can be the individual budgets from each department, and the pencils and pens are the things you need to make the school work, like electricity, transportation, et cetera. All of it has to go into your backpack, but it all has to fit. The budget works the same way. All of these parts need to work together. Think about your backpack in kindergarten, besides the cool transformer one you had. It's probably smaller, it couldn't hold much, so each year, your textbooks got bigger and bigger, and you needed more supplies like calculators and rulers. Your backpack needs to get bigger, just like the budget.
How do they settle on a budget? I mean, if we're still using the backpack analogy, how do they decide whether they want to use the same textbooks or the same folders, if they want to buy new ones?
So, the superintendent gets the recommended budget from all the departments in September. These budgets are compared to last year's to see what the needs of the system are for the next year. For example, every school year, you go out to your open house, you meet your teachers, and usually, they tell you what you'll need for their classes. Just like the superintendent gets a supply list from the different departments. Let's say the school system spent some money on technology, things like smart boards, computers, and so on for the schools in 2018. The superintendent can look back and determine what they will need to spend for 2019. In 2019, the big need may not be technology, just like you may not need a new composition book for every class. Let's say there are more students in 2019 school year. There may be more of a need for textbooks and bus transportation than for technology. It all varies on the needs of the school system.
After he has all the department's budgets, he puts it together and compares the budgets to what money he will get from the state, county, and federal funds.
So, if my mom gives me $30 for school supplies for my backpack, and I need five composition books, five folders, and five pencils, I would have to compare how much I need versus how much my mom gave? But why start so early if we're not going to be using the money until next year?
The superintendent uses the next six months to adjust the board's budget to get within the numbers he thinks the system will receive. Once that is all worked out, he will present it to the Board of Education.
The majority of our budget costs is personnel, supporting the 2,300 employees who work on behalf of our kids every day.
The board's budget is very complex. The Board of Education has to consider the class sizes so that they're good to learn in, gas prices going up for bus transportation, heating prices increasing, raises for employees, textbooks, all the things we need every day in order to have an effective system, just like you need to make sure your backpack has enough space for your folders and books and homework. Some of these choices are hard. There are a lot of known factors and a lot of unknown factors that determine where most of the budget's attention goes to.
The superintendent has to present the budget plan to the Board of Education. They work with the superintendent and listen to the concerns of the parents and staff to determine the priorities of the school system. They might have to cut or add depending on what they feel is needed. After they get to a good balance, they approve it. Once the budget is approved by the Board of Education, it goes to the county government and the county commissioners for the final approval.
How do we see the budget?
There will be a meeting where the public can voice their concerns. The county commissioners also have a public meeting where you can go and express your concerns or show your support.
Wow, this budget sounds like hard work. How do we know what's happening next week or next year in terms of budgeting and money?
All we know is that the SMCPS has 20,000 students and staff members we need to teach and keep safe every day. That is our number one priority.
So, every day, when you walk down the halls, when you're reading your textbooks, when you're on the bus, or even eating your lunch, all these things are built into the budget for the school system. But remember, things are fluid.
And we all work together to make the budget a workable solution for everyone.
How did you learn all of this, Sophia?
You can watch board meetings or learn about the school system at the St. Mary's County Public Schools website, www.smcps.org.
Wow, I didn't even know my backpack could be so informative. Set up, guys.
So, what do you think of that? Pretty impressive. It's okay, it's the clap now, it's the clap, let's do a little clap thing, great, all right, great, okay, good. Good. So, you talk about that operating budget, that really is incredibly important. Recognize that when we're talking about just the unrestricted revenues, the state, the local, the federal, and then other related miscellaneous, it's 222 million dollars. 222 million dollars that go into the operating budget for this year alone. When we take a look at it again, the majority of that money is salaries at 60%, benefits at 23%, and then contracted services at 10%. To take another way of looking at it, salaries for that 222 million dollars, 132 million dollars, 60% of that is just, just goes to pay for staff. And that's staff in ISMAC, ISMAC ESP, SMASA, and extra pay for... And that's staff in ISMAC, ISMAC ESP, SMASA, and extra pay for extra duty, all those things, all those extra things that teachers and staff do every single day to make sure that kids have a well-rounded experience. Fixed charges are healthcare, social security, retirement, and workers' compensation. That's $51 million, or 23% of the budget. And the last is contracted services, and contracted services, the majority of that money goes to transportation. Because although we do have some directly paid buses and drivers, the majority of that is done through contracting and contracted services. We do contracting with therapists, we do online learning, we have a High Roads program, an alternative learning program in elementary, middle, and high, and we have the annual independent audit that we referred to earlier, and that's $23 million. So of the budget, 93% is directly related to people and people costs. We also have capital improvement, capital improvement plan projects for next, for this year, almost total $10 million. Of that, the state covers 58, and the county covers 42. And then we have local CIP, safety and security, and stadium lights, and paving, and public address, and relocate, public address systems, and relocatable, relocatable movement about the county for, for population growth and playgrounds. That's $3 million. So when you put it all together, we're talking about close to $250 million a year. Four years, that's a bill, it's a quarter billion dollars. So a good question is, wow, what are we getting for, what are we getting for our investment of a quarter of a billion dollars? How are we doing? Well, for the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, which was PARC, now it's MCAP, we outperformed the state at every single grade level on every single one of the tests, some substantially. For advanced placement, we offer, we increase our enrollment every single year in AP-level coursework, and we improve in our performance every single year, and we outperform the state and the world. So that's pretty impressive, scores of 3 and more. Our graduation rate, 94.5% of our students graduate on time last year. More importantly, when you disaggregate that data, 88% of our economically disadvantaged kids are graduating on time. That's the highest rate that we've posted to date. We recognize there are a gap, and that's what we're working on. For African-American students, we have gone up and down, but we are now within two points of the overall aggregate score, and we're really proud of that, and we recognize that that really is one of the most important measures of a school system, how well we're doing with our graduates, and how they're graduating as, in a disaggregated fashion when we look at the data. Our graduates, again, 45%, a two-year, 35%, eight, sorry, 45% of two-year, 35% of four-year, 4% attend a trade or technical school, 10% directly enter the workforce, 6% entering the military. We had over $33 million worth of scholarships offered to last year's graduating class alone. And why that's important is if you take a look at what the lifetime earning projections are, based on your attainment of education, just the 94% of kids that walked across the stage, they increased their earning, their lifetime earnings by over $400,000, just by walking across the stage. For those that are going to go on, for the 4% to 10% of graduates, they're going to go on to a technical, a, a, a technical college or a technical school, they can increase their earning potential by $600,000. For those that are going to go on to CSM, they're getting close to doubling their lifetime earning. For those that are going to go on to four-year colleges and universities, it's almost, well, it's two and a half times their overall lifetime earning. And a master's degree is ultimately three times. That's incredibly important, and that's incredibly important for our, particularly for our county commissioners and for everybody within the county and business community, because those people, the more you make, the more you have to pay in taxes. So the more revenue that you have as a county, the more revenue you have as a county, the more you're able to do things, and it becomes a never-ending cycle of improvement as opposed to stagnation. Also, the more money you have, the more disposable income you have, the more you go out and take advantage of recreational opportunities within a county, and the more you invest in your home itself, the more your home is valued, the more you pay in taxes. So all of this goes back to, you know, going back and feeding the system that indeed, and that is a great return on investment. We're not going to really talk about the Kerwin Commission tonight. There'll be more than enough opportunity to talk about the Kerwin Commission. The Kerwin Commission was convened primarily because of this chart. When you take a look at Harford County Public Schools, which is a per pupil allocation of $13,776 compared to Worcester, which is $18,472, that's, that's quite a difference. And that means that the educational experiences from Harford to Worcester, and from Worcester to Baltimore City or to Montgomery County, that buys, that buys a lot of experience, that buys a lot of experiences, that buys a lot of opportunity. If we take a look at where we are, we are no longer last in the state. We were, we were, and every single year, we have moved up that ladder. And believe it or not, we have moved up that ladder because every single year, from the county level, they are funding us over the bare minimum maintenance of effort that they had to. So they have moved us from being the lowest per pupil to, what are we now, 7th? 7th. And that's, we're thankful for it. $14,390 per student, we're able to do a great deal for that money. If we were to go up to the Maryland average of $15,848. So a differential of almost $1,500 per student per year, and we have 17,038 full-time equivalent students eligible for funding, that's $24 million more. So if we were, if we were funded at the state average, we would have $24 million more annually to do things for our kids, and to take care of the people who take care of our kids, and to add to the ranks of the people who take care of our kids. And that's at the core of Kerwin. How do you equalize that? How do you bring the lowest up to the highest? And it's a, it's a huge conversation, because at the end of it, it's going to talk, they're going to talk about where they have to find that revenue, where they're going to have to find that revenue. And as of right now, in St. Mary's County, it looks like the increases are going to mostly be on the state level. The state's going to have to figure out a way to provide more funding to St. Mary's County. The county commissioners just need to continue funding at about 3% more over year, over year, over year, which has been the historical average for the last, I think, 10 years, five years back that they went. So a large conversation, and that's where that all is. At this point, we've talked a little bit about the school system, about our mission, about the whole child, about budgets, about how we spend money, how we budget money, and really, what we want to do is we'd like to have a great opportunity to, to hear from people who are really doing the work, people who are really involved in the lives of our children every single day. And we have some questions to begin with, and then we'll look to our audience and any questions that they may have. And so at this point, I am going to step away, and Dr. Marr is going to come up to introduce our panelists and take over that. So with that, Dr. Marr.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Marr. Let's have a little clap for Dr. Marr. Yay!
So I'd like to invite our panelists forward, Ms. Jennifer Cord, who is a teacher at White Marsh Elementary School, and our Maryland Teacher of the Year nominee, Ms. Tracy Harding, who is a GIS teacher at Leonardtown High School, and our Washington Post Teacher of the Year, and Ms. Jill Morris, who is the president of our Education Association of St. Mary's County, and of course, Dr. Smith, if you would also join us in case any questions come your way as well. And the way we have this structured is we have, as, we'll ask each individual a particular question for them, and then I have some questions we'll throw out to the entire panel, and then, of course, we'd love to hear from the audience as well. And there are some blue cards on the table if, if it helps, if you'd like to write down a question to ask, we will go ahead and collect those when you're ready. You can just put them in, you know, bring them forward or hand them to one of our staff to bring up. So first, we'll start with Ms. Cord. So Dr. Smith talked about the importance of connecting with kids. How do you connect with your students, and how do you engage students to, to build that relationship? And, and if you could talk about that and how that connects with the content you teach as well?
I spend a lot of time, first of all, relationships are first for me in my school, like in my classroom. Building a relationship matters more than the content itself. The content will come once my students feel that I have connected with them. That's sometimes going to a Saturday game, that's sometimes learning about their family, something that they're doing, checking in with them, making sure that they feel safe, not necessarily security safe, but safe with me, safe to taste, take risks, safe to fail and to learn from it. I talked earlier to Dr. Smith about this, that sometimes I'll use me as the mistake, or I'll say, oh, look what I did, I did this wrong. It's really okay for kids to realize that we're all going to make mistakes and learn from them and be better. So finding that culture in my room to make sure that they feel safe to do that is important. And then really just making myself available to their parents, making sure that they feel like I'm a person they can come to on any level to help them be the best kid and the best family they can be. So once I've done that, then my kids are able to learn. If I don't do those things first, then nothing that I say will really matter. Nothing that we learn is going to be beneficial. Like, it will, but it's not as good. It just is like a thousand times better when kids are, feel like you care, and feel like you're interested in what they do.
It's a real critical connection. I'm going to go over to Ms. Harding. You, you teach in the GIS program and a lot of advanced classes. Can you talk about the impact of a rigorous curriculum on your students? And more specifically, what makes that curriculum more rigorous than others?
First, I want to address, and Dr. Smith talked about this a little bit earlier, whether a kid is placed in an academic level class or an AP level class, we should be ensuring that they have a rigorous, rigorous curriculum. However, we do have some students that need the increased rigor of an AP or dual enrollment class. In these classes, students have to have a little bit better time management skills. In a typical class, a kid's going to get a homework assignment and it's due the next day. In an AP class, I'm going to give you an assignment and it's going to be due in 10 days, and you're going to have to learn to manage that. Typically, if a kid's in one AP class, they're probably in another AP class or other higher level courses, so they're having to not just manage the curriculum within one class, but within multiple classes. And I probably would say that the biggest change in the rigor in the classroom is what students are expected to do with different sources. All students should be experiencing and exposed to a variety of sources and high-quality sources, but in AP classes, again, it's a college-level course, they are expected to be reading college texts and analyze things at that level, and synthesize material at a much higher level, again, college-level work. The biggest impact that I see from the rigor that we have in the classroom, and again, this links to what Ms. Cord said relating to relationships, is that AP classes provide the opportunity for productive struggle. If a kid doesn't struggle, a kid doesn't grow. And in an AP classroom, in the high school setting, students are given the environment and the comfort and the safety of their teachers and the other members of the school system to have that struggle, and for some, it's a little bit more than others, but they're able to learn the time management skills and the ability to, to fail sometimes, or be unsuccessful, and to come back from that in an environment where it's okay and somebody's going to say, let me help you, this is how I can help you, here's a skill, here's a strategy. And this benefits our kids whether they go out directly into the workforce or they go into college, because when they get there, they've developed the skills that they need to be successful and to cope when something is difficult. And that's probably the, the thing that I hear most when I talk to students that have gone away to college or into the workforce, is that they're thankful that they, they had that struggle in 10th grade or 11th grade or 12th grade, and were able to learn how to manage it. So when they got into their real life, their real world, they were able to manage, manage future struggles.
Thank you very much. So we've just heard from two amazing educators, and you can hear the passion in what they have shared, as well as that dedication that goes on. Now I'm going to turn to Ms. Morris, who represents not just teachers, but all other support staff across the system. So each staff member plays an important role in meeting the needs of our students. Jill, can you talk about how support staff and classroom teachers work together and the impact that has on helping our students?
Absolutely. Would be glad to talk about that. That's my favorite subject of all. All right, so here's the deal about being a support staff person. We're a partner. So this is how I rolled. I spent most of my career as a special education parent educator, and I loved every minute of it, Dr. Montgomery, and I hope to go back to doing it again someday. And one of the things I would do is I would show up in the certificated, so I worked with certificated people every day, and I would show up and I'd say, what can I do to make your life easier today? How can I support you? And so that is how we would roll in trying to approach very difficult learning situations, because I subbed in everything from a sale classroom to push-in, I would do pull-out groups, and the whole idea of support staff being in the background just really isn't true. We make school work. We're essential. So when we show up and partner with our fabulous certificated staff, great things happen. You know, I'm out in the state a lot now as president, and, you know, we ain't perfect in St. Mary's County, but we're pretty, I won't cuss.
We're pretty darn close.
We're pretty darn close. We're innovative, and we're excellent at what we do, and we keep pushing forward. I can't tell you how proud I am that we have social workers in the school now. This is a huge, huge accomplishment. And I know our cabinet, Dr. Montgomery, Dr. Smith, they really pushed for this, and this was a, a result of hard times in our county and a tragedy, but some, some pushing forward and some positive things were put in place around that. Okay, I'll stop talking.
No, that's right. Thank you. No, I'm sorry. I think you really talked about the real importance of the partnering that happens within a school, across all the staff that really work together. Ken, and this can really go out to any of you, how do we keep parents engaged with that, with their students' education as, and help build that partnership beyond our school walls as well?
Pointing right down. Guess I'll take that one. I think in an elementary school, it lends itself a little more, because I, I'm a high school parent now, so I'm definitely trying to step back a little bit, and you want them to be more successful. But in elementary school, there's really that need for our parents to be involved. We all have like apps or ClassDojo or ways that we keep our parents engaged. I spend lots of time putting pictures of my classroom on there so they see what's going on, so that when their kid gets home from school and says, we didn't do anything, they, oh, I saw a picture today, you were doing this lab, or you were doing this math activity. So being able to show them is a little bit more captivating sometimes. Being available, I mean, some people will say, I don't answer my messages after a certain point. I'm probably the worst person for that. I'll answer them at any time for anyone, but they know that I will answer it, and sometimes that makes somebody feel better. Like, as a parent on the other end, I have those questions sometimes, and you just want to know one little, little quick answer. So it's nice to have somebody that will respond, but making them feel connected and making them feel like they matter too. They're a partner in this whole thing, and that we work together to make their kids successful, and it's not just me, they have to put a piece in as well. So finding the, to marry the two is really important.
From a high school level, and I'm actually going to talk about being the elementary parent. But on a high school level, again, I, I don't know that I contact my parents as much as my elementary daughter's parent, I mean, teacher contacts me through ClassDojo or something like that, but I do think it's important. Typically, at the beginning of the year, I'll send out an email that says, hey, I'm your kid's teacher, and just telling them that I am available, because that's really important to just know that the teacher is going to respond to you. I typically do my 6:00 AM early morning email, and parents will say, wow, you answered me at 6:00 AM. And I'm like, yeah, I did answer you at 6:00 AM, because I think that that's important. I think it's important to send information about what you're doing in the classroom, but also like, when a kid does something like really good or really cool, like I like to send the parent an email and say, hey, your kid did this thing today, and it was awesome. And sometimes it might be the only time the parent's gotten that kind of a message. From a parental perspective, I would say probably the coolest thing that ever happened, right? Elementary school math is a little bit different, and I try not to think that I'm that old, but elementary school math is different. And my kid's teacher sent out an email and said, hey, I know elementary school math is different. And he hosted like a little parent night, and he invited us in and said, let me show you how to do new elementary school math, and like, as a parent and as a teacher, I was like, wow, like, that was a big deal for me.
Oh, go ahead. I was gonna, I was going to, I'm going to take off my president hat and my employee hat, and I'm going to put on my parent hat. Our daughter, Molly, Morris Wagner, graduated from Leonardtown High School. She went to Hollywood Elementary in Esperanza. She had fabulous educators all along the way who held my hand, who did respond to me appropriately when I had an off-the-wall question, or I was freaked out about something. This is another thing that's very special about our county. Our educators are responsive, they're appropriate, and they're Our educators are responsive, they're appropriate, and they're helpful. And they're helpful age-appropriate because by the time we got to high school, you know, it needed to be more on my kid, not on me. And it was really masterful how the teachers that Molly had helped me understand that in a very polite and loving way.
It's very appropriate that you all talked about the shifts that happen as you go from elementary to middle and to high. And earlier, Dr. Smith talked about those transition years and why that's really a critical focus for us. So, we know how students often may struggle at those key transition points, for example, from 5 to 6 as they go into middle school or from 8 to 9 as they go into high school. How do we mitigate those challenges? And what have you seen or done that works for students?
I'll go first, I guess, this time. I'm actually going to talk about the new initiative this year. I know at Leonardtown, we have Freshman Academy, and this is our second year. We actually rolled out Freshman Seminar, and I think that that has been really, really beneficial to our kids. We, again, starting last year with our Freshman Academy program, we had kids for the first two weeks of school. The freshmen met for half of one hour lunch, and they were actually told about the things that you do at high school, like, "What do you do at the homecoming pep rally? And what is Spirit Week? And how do you calculate your GPA?" I mean, like, very simple things. How do you navigate the different clubs? And what do you have to have if you want to try out for a sport? And we have students provide that information to the students, and that's really beneficial. This year, we have the Freshman Seminar class, and we identified some students that we thought might have a little bit more struggles in the classroom, and we provide more tailored support in very small classroom style. And that has also been helpful. And just recently, with the end of the first quarter, we have paired student to student with our freshman class to ensure that the students are getting the support, and yes, the teachers are providing the support. But I feel like for a lot of students, it's much easier to approach another student and say, "I'm struggling" because that student is in the same shoes where to approach a teacher sometimes can be more difficult. So, I feel like the involvement of other students with our students provides a great benefit.
Helping them make those connections along the way.
I guess, being a 5th grade teacher, I can definitely speak to the transition of sending my children off to middle school. And you spoke earlier about the very small elementary school. I have, there's 250-ish kids in our school. I don't know, 270, depends. But there's a small class size, like we have 50 5th graders who last year went into a 360th grade class at Margaret Brent, bigger than they've ever even been in a gymnasium with. So, that experience alone is terrifying for a lot of our kids and our parents coming from a super tight, small family school to go to this big place. They're used to like, "You respond to me." I still get messages from parents about middle school. They don't, they're afraid to ask their other teacher. I'll just send Mrs. Cord a message. She'll answer. But I know I do. And then, I usually forward it to the teacher that needs to know, so you might want to contact this person. But we spend a lot of time in 5th grade transitioning from being, it's kind of like the parent transition too. It's like you've got to let go a little bit. And we teach them that we're still going to be here and we're going to be safe. There's this little safety net, but you've got to take risks. You've got to try. Next year, you're going to have to learn to ask a question. You can't just assume the teacher's going to know what's going on. If you don't understand something, you have to say something. So, we build a lot of those things in for them to really learn how to do them. We practice them. We practice saying them, like, "What would you say if you didn't understand this? What could you say to the teacher? When could you go talk to them?" And then, being a middle school parent, I kind of had that perspective for a couple of years, and I was able to apply what I was learning as a parent on the other side to really giving my kids a better education about what was coming. Because I used to say, "I know in middle school, they're not going to let you do that." And now, I could really say, "They're really not going to let you do that. I know this. I saw my kid's grades." So, not going to happen. But it was just, it was teaching them that the people are still going to be there for them, but they're going to have to reach out a little more. And by the time they get to high school, they have to even reach out further. So, that's, there's those things in place to be better students on their own, being independent but still having somebody there.
For the record, these are fantastic answers. You should write these down. Now, part of it is that, this is Jill's first panel today.
It is.
For the other, it's so funny, the things that you told me earlier in the day that you wished you had said, I noticed you rolled back through.
I know.
And so, we talked about the power of failure and the incredible importance of persistence and productive struggle and partnering. It's great. You are a masterful group. And certainly, our secondary people, we know, as you give your lesson at one point in the day and then you come back and you give your lesson again, the second time that lesson is done, it's always so much better. And the third, it's diminishing returns. So, it's like, "Better than that," you know, kind of like, so the end of the day, it's like, "All right, blah, blah, you get it." But it's wonderful to hear you both. And so, for those watching along at home, if you want to, you can go back and watch the state of the schools in the morning and your responses, and then compare them to their responses tonight and recognize just how much better we get every single day. This morning was great as well, but we get better every single day. And I think that's, I think that that's honestly what I personally, so this is my 28th year, whatever, I'll be going to 28th. So, I love the fact that we get better. I love the fact that we get better. And moreover, the larger community, I think, respects that. You know, respects that, you know, "Oh, geez, that, mm," you know. And we get together, we talk about what worked and what didn't work, and we get better, we get better each day, we get better each month, we get better each year. And right now, I'm, you know, for the most part, I feel really good about, well, you can't feel good about, there's so many things that we can't control, the things that we can, and the people that we have, you know, at the wheel. I'm very heartened by the people that I have the opportunity to work with every single day. I mean, I think this is the highest caliber of people that I've ever seen gathered in one system. It really is. It's a fantastic group of people. And you can see it just because of all the people that came out tonight. All the people from the system that came out tonight to support all of you and your comments and to support the school system, I think that says a great deal about what makes St. Mary's County Public Schools so special.
That's great. So, let me ask one final prepared question that really goes back to what Dr. Smith shared earlier, and that is this idea of return on investment. And you all as staff are investments for us, the work that we do every day is. So, how do we see that investment paying off? Are there any examples that you can think to your own work about some examples that would be great illustrations of that return on investment?
Okay. All right. I'll respond. Dr. Smith talked about numbers and data, and yes, quantitative information is wonderful. And our kids continue to perform well, right, above state averages, above global averages and different things. But I would say that for me, when I look at my investment, which is the school system's investment in me, it is when those kids go off to college and I get that message from them that says, "Oh, Ms. Harding, let me tell you this," right? And they say, "I went into my class, and I did this, and I knew this, and I knew this because you taught me how to do this thing." Or just a random message to say, "Hey, I'm doing well." Because that says that, whether it's because I taught them some content skill or I made a connection with them, that they wanted to come back and tell me. And I probably think the strongest thing that I got was my first year after teaching in the GIS program, and my first batch of kids went off to college. And one, she calls me and she was like, "I want you to know that I'm writing this research paper right now, and my peers, they are struggling and they are sweating, and I'm just moving right along, and they're wondering why I'm doing this. And I'm doing this because GIS taught me how to do it." And I was like, "Good." So, I guess to me, the investment is when the students come back and say, "Look what I'm doing," and they know that they're doing it because of what they were taught through our school system.
So, I was, as you're saying that, I was like, "Oh." I came, when we were here in the job fair in the spring, no, that was like the best thing ever. Like, we, when I went to Northrop Grumman for a field trip this past week with all the other Maryland Teachers of the Year, and there were students there, and they talked about what teachers have done for them and how it mattered, and we encouraged them to continue to call their teachers to say that because, you know, we can do, we think we're doing all these amazing things, but until somebody says to you, "Thank you, you've made a difference," or a parent note, you know, gifts are fantastic, but the written notes are what make so much more, you know, it's just so much more valuable. But sitting here at the job fair in the spring, I was sitting with my principal interviewing, and a student of mine walked back in, and that was like, you know, "Well, yes, I'm showing my age that I'm old enough to have a student that now teaches in the school system. I have multiple students teaching in the school system." But it was really cool to sit in an interview across the table from a child that was yours at one point and now could articulate and be intelligent and be able to say why they were going to be an amazing teacher. And, you know, you can't, you can't help but kind of take a little bit of, you know, pride in saying, "Wow, that is fantastic." And they want to come back to like a great place, and they want to come back to St. Mary's. So, it's kind of a cool, and she is teaching in the county, so.
So, I love when you go out in public and they don't realize that you do anything else besides education. Remember that feeling? Yeah. And one of my favorites, so return on investment, one of my favorite stories is I'm right up here at the Birch Mart in Hollywood. I'm putting gas in my car just like a normal person, and this kid rose, opened the door of his van and goes, "Mrs. Morris, you are the best." And to me, that is, sums up or the essence of what it's like to go all-in with kids. And they don't have, they're not, they're, they just call it like they see it. They're judgmental. They will tell you if you are not right, and they will also unconditionally affirm you. And so, for him to, you know, yell at me in the middle of a parking lot at Birch Mart, I kind of felt like I must be doing some things right.
Right. Yeah. Oh, those are fantastic. And I will echo, show my age even more. I have had graduates that have come back after they have graduated and gone to college, then found life partners, got married, had children. Their children went through the school system and graduated. And that's when you go, "Wow. Wow, that's it." But we see every single year, we see more and more of our students who graduate and then go off to college and come back to St. Mary's County and come back and want to teach with us. And that's, I mean, what an exceptional testament it is to the school system that creates such a fantastic lifelong learner that they go off into the wider world, they grab that expertise, they come back, and they want to teach, they want to teach with us, they want to do the exact same thing over and over and over again. And that, and that's what really makes St. Mary's County Public Schools very special. The average length of service, again, is 14 years. 14 years. That's an astonishing number in a world where supposedly all these millennials are looking to the gig economy and they're going from, they're batting from this to this, to this, to this. We have people that come here and stay for 15 years. And so, that really, 14 years, that really is something that matters most. I was presenting before the Kerwin Commission in abbreviated fashion last night, and before me, Jack Smith, the former superintendent over in Calverton now, and was the, was an acting state superintendent and is now the superintendent in Montgomery County, which just has only 160,000 kids.
Yeah.
Staggering. But he was giving testimony, and he said, I love, he always has the, just the right turn of phrase. He said that students represent 20% of the population in the state of Maryland, high school, public school-aged students, 20% of all the population in the state of Maryland are students. They represent 20%. But that 20% represents 100% of our future. And so, when we start talking about what kind of investment should we be making in this 20%, when you recognize that our future completely depends on how well you have all prepared them, it is an investment that truly pays us back in so many, so many different ways. So, I thank you, thank you very much for all your comments tonight and everything, your responses. They're just, they're just spot-on, and I couldn't, I couldn't say anything more about how proud I am to get to share a town hall dance with all of you wonderful and lovely people.
Thank you all very much. Before you all return to your seats, do we have any questions from members of the audience Well, thank you all very much.